It's a meeting for. On the twenty-sixth.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Twenty-six it should be.
Yeah.
I'm gonna show all of their one time to see if you're actually.
By that time.
Commissioner.
I'll go with you, Brian.
Commissioner.
You're gonna have the, uh, budget hearing set for the following meeting stuff, so that vice. You know, like.
A lighter.
A lighter agenda. I would say can't hear it to you.
Commissioner. Commissioner Swainy, me and Weber are gonna sneak up to see if you're actually working on. We think of you in two days, two days.
I just had a laundry.
Right?
We'll bring our own.
And we are.
There's, uh, for, um. Right beside Marina right. When I come in there early. All the people. Do you see the same guys that are.
I'd like to call the, is it County Board of Commissioners Finance Committee, committee to hold order. And. Please.
My pleasure. Dan. One nation.
And Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Jelzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Swainy.
Present.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Inger.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Marina.
Here.
All present Mr. Chairman except, Mr. Vice Chairman, except for Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Uh, up next will be approval of the agenda. We'll start with, uh, general public comments on agenda items only. We have no presentations or special. Reports, no appointments to boards or commissions. Under committee reports, we do have thirteen. Items of business to take care of today. Uh, and then we have no intergovernmental affairs, uh, any administrator controller issues. Unfinished business, no new business. We'll have general public comment towards the end of the meeting, open to any subject. Uh, that anyone wants to talk about and then announcements and then adjournments. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moving Reno.
Support Jelzinski.
And support it, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Next is the general public comments on agenda items only. For general public.
My comment is regarding the. I go up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, sign in.
And sign in.
That, that we have the little. The clerk has the info.
Thank you. Address too. It does.
Sure. Yeah.
Oh.
Supports David.
Um, the opioid advisory committee bylaws discussing. Good morning, everyone. My name is Nadia Ashtari and I'm a health educator at the Central Michigan District Health Department. Through my work with our syringe service program, Exchange Central, I interact directly with individuals who use substances. My role provides me with firsthand experiences and insight on the impact of the opioid epidemic. I see it every single day with the work that I do. These opioid settlement dollars are an opportunity to make a tremendous impact on our community, not only for individuals struggling with opioid use disorders, but their families as well. These funds are indicative, indicative of the opioid crisis occurring in Isabella County and address the fact that we have a public health crisis. These funds can be used to empower our community, promote prevention and education, as well as allow us to avoid past mistakes. Can move forward with this money and it's gonna make a huge difference. Through community assessments and data collection, it has been shown that Isabella County is lacking resources for our community members impacted by substance use and evidence-based solutions. These settlement dollars can be used to expand strategies, initiatives, and comprehensive support for those using in our community or for those seeking recovery and for their families. I would first like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Secondly, thank you for establishing the opioid advisory committee, a group of people with expertise and valuable insight as to the damage that has been done to our community from the opioid crisis. I appreciate your time today and I look forward to seeing the positive impact these opioid settlement dollars will make on our community members that have been directly impacted by the crisis. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nadia, what is your title again?
Health educator.
You.
You like the way that the board, uh, set up the bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, uh, any changes or anything in there will more likely to, uh, to accept them, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
Appreciate that. So we worked really hard.
Jelzinski did a lot of work on this, so.
Yeah. Yeah, he worked very hard on the bylaws and, uh, we were part of the subcommittee that participated in that process and I want to let you know, I think that they are very well thought out. Policies, very well thought out bylaws. Um, we worked really hard at defining. To be on the committee, um, to help with the decision-making, those that have been directly impacted. And struggle with addiction and those who are working with those that are struggling with addiction, so that we have a good representation and a balanced representation. For the sub.
That's good. That's good to hear. That, I mean, that stuff all takes time, but that's the foundation we're gonna work from going forward, so very.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for subbing me for work.
Well, thank you. Thanks for bringing that, Jerry. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else for general public comment? Alright. Uh, brings us down to committee reports and the first item is consider ratifying and placing on file the July fourth, two thousand twenty-five invoice list. In the amount of two hundred forty thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. The July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. The July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five invoice list in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. And the adjustment list dated July tenth, two thousand twenty-five and is usually our customary procedure. We're gonna have our administrator walk us through these.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is the list that was sent out, uh, weeks ago and so we'll have, uh, multiple ones this time since we had the cancellation of the one meeting. So first will be the July fourth invoice list, total amount two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars fifty-eight cents. And out of that, the general fund portion is a hundred and ten thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Some of the larger items in here is the University of Michigan Health for monthly medical examiner fees for June. We also have WellPath for forty-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars and fifty-four cents for monthly medical services contract. Gore and Food Service for six thousand eleven dollars and three cents and various trial court and, uh, registered even clerk trans bill.
Good. Any comments on that one? Couple of, uh, direct supervised care, uh, from the childcare upon, that's, that's something we have little control over. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know it's the last couple of months, there hasn't been any on the supervised care and so we got a couple of it took a month off, then we got a big one. And the big one coming up in, uh, the last, like twenty-fifth, so. So for a while there, we didn't have any, uh, we're starting to get a little bit, so.
I know, or it's, they have at times hard on replacement, but, uh, I was wondering, is there, um, uh. Preferred providers like Pineview as opposed to. Uh, McBride Quality Care that, or do, are they providing different types of supervised care?
I.
Does anyone?
I think McBride is more, uh, unsup, it's. McBride is not the directly supervised one, that need the direct supervised, yeah, so there is a difference in level of care. In which Pineview Homes has the more specialized twenty-four seven, uh, care and then McBride would be more at home. Generally more or less supervision.
So. Boiled down, Pineview is more like security or home.
Yes, sir.
Secure and non-secure, I think is the terminology that the court uses. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next I'll go over the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, total amount two hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars eighty-eight cents. Out of that is the general portion of forty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars seventy-four cents. And again, right here you'll see we've got McBride Quality Care, uh, for five thousand four hundred forty dollars. We have KCI for the summer tax assessment, uh, mailing for equalization in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars at sixty-five cents. Our buy a weekly animal control contract to hats for five thousand nine sixty-one and fifty-four cents. And then the, uh, big one for Tech eighty-four incorporated for the whole body scanning system of a hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Questions on that one?
Okay, next we will do the July eighteenth, total amount three hundred ninety-one thousand fifty-six dollars fifty cents. General fund portion is a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirteen cents. The larger items over five thousand dollars on this page is Middle Michigan Development for its fourth quarter appropriations of eleven thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. The community mental health of fifty-four thousand seventy-five dollars for its fourth quarter appropriations. We have the scenario implementation fee of eleven thousand two hundred sixty dollars and forty-eight cents, which is, uh, getting close to being wrapped up. And then we have various, uh, full, uh, penal fine distributions and tech sale proceeds from the treasurer. To, uh, Chippewa District Library, Sherwin Township and we like. And just to note the Brian Smith that is on that vendor's name is not me. That Brian James Smith, that is not me on the quarterly or on the tax sale proceeds, so.
I'm sure that never.
That's not me, there's, there's only a couple of us around.
So, Madam Clerk, can you explain?
I was just gonna ask. How's this horse pull about?
Horse pull?
The Horse Pulling Boat Association.
Oh, that's just the name of the business, yeah, they. I don't get the ins and outs of what these people.
I just wanted to know how. How do you pull a boat with the horse?
I just, well, I mean.
Seahorse maybe. I just had to ask.
Yes, sir.
Have a question on the.
Don't need.
The background bills on page one of eighteen, just a flip side of the.
Yep.
Um, two things that stand out to me on, um, the Millbrook Water Company payment. When you go down and look at the charges, most of them are going to a supply account, except for two. There's one that has jury fees, another one professional services and there are eight hundred, uh, series, which would be a contractual labor. Uh, expense, uh, during, on the uniform chart of accounts. I'm just wondering, is that a mistake or?
If it's not a mistake, all the trial court has, um, always posted the water for their theories to that.
You had a contractual label, labor line up.
Doesn't mean necessarily, sir, that it's contractual labor, contractual services. You have a contracted, uh, somebody that we're gonna.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing new to these two by items whatsoever, uh, company spending some time for over ten years.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? That one?
Great. The last invoice list, uh, July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, total three hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Out of this, the general fund portion is eighty-six thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars eighty-nine cents. The big items here, we have advanced benefit solutions for the, uh, prescriptions of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars fifty-two cents. Preston Community Services Reequalization Contract for nineteen thousand three seventy-five, another one for advanced benefit solutions. Twenty-two thousand two hundred sixty dollars and seventy-four cents for dental and vision insurance. And then we have core technology of twenty-seven thousand seven fifty-six sixty-seven for data interoperability, annual software. And then some various, uh, treasure and trial court. Invoices.
Yes, sir. Question on page five of fourteen. There's a, uh, series of payments for reimbursement of mileage to the same individual beginning in October, going through July. The sum, if you add it all up, it's quite a bit, but what is that related to? Somebody forgot to charge your mileage?
This is a person that did not put in their mileage and, uh, left employment and we allowed them to go back to October twenty-four, but no further back. And so this is just somebody that failed to put in their mileage.
Okay.
And, uh, and that's why it all shows up on this one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
Okay, the last thing we have is the July tenth, uh, we have adjustments list. This is the list that is set for your approval for invoices that were paid in advance to avoid late fees. Or to get early payment discounts or to correct any errors that were made. We have, uh, no. Well, we have two, two out of this whole page right here where they were, uh. Changes had to be made, the rest of them are for your typical consumers' energy, gore and food service, some to the city of Mount Budden as well.
Questions on that one? Okay. Thank you. And we'll move those to next week's, uh, board meeting and move on to item two, consider approving the Isabella County Opiate. Advisory Committee bylaws as presented and authorized the board chair, burden and county clerk to sign the same. Alright, so.
I prepared the staff report, but I will defer to Commissioner Jelzinski to, uh, uh, present this.
Be happy to. So we've been receiving, uh, settlement dollars and I'm not sure what the, uh, corpus is right now. But it's been earning interest and these dollars are sitting in our account dedicated. They have to be used for opioid, uh, uh, services. And so this is, uh, an opportunity for us to, uh, use those dollars in a manner that will have a impact on the residents of our county. Uh, I was given credit for the bylaws. We did get a, uh, county document, but I gotta tell you, this, uh, work group. Which represents a, a number of professionals through the county that dealing with these opioid crisis, uh, did a lot of refinement on it. I think the, this final document is a very solid document, something that will serve the county, uh, very well in the long run. And I suspect a number of the members of this work group will probably be eventually seated, uh, by the county board on this, uh, advisory committee. So the, the beauty of this is, uh, there are guidelines, uh, that come with the settlement dollars and the committee be responsible for following those guidelines and. Uh, soliciting, uh, requests for proposals, uh, judging the proposals and then making recommendations to the county board for funding. Which, uh, takes the big burden off of, uh, members of this board. And, uh, the members of this board don't have the expertise that this committee will have. So I encourage, uh, adoption of this and we move forward, uh, I'm not sure what the procedure is, working through the clerk's office probably to, uh. Uh, stick the, uh, the members for, to the, uh, to the board, but, uh, it's the beginning.
And this has went through legal review as well, which is stated in the document.
Sir.
Yeah, I don't know if your committee went into this or not, but how do you invest? The money, is there restrictions on there or who does, are you gonna be in charge of that as far as the county?
Right now, it's currently being, uh, handled by the county treasurer.
Okay.
Or she has invested in various account, because a lot of the other cash accounts that are at a pretty, uh, a decent rate of return.
Okay, I just wonder, so it's the restrictions to the treasurer that does.
Yes, it's just basically the restriction that the treasurer has on her.
Has on her investment.
Yes, but so she's investing it just like the other.
Okay. Once. I just wanted to understand that you don't wanna be investing in the wrong.
No.
Places, so.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to say that Amy from Mac, she's back on there, the person that's provides a lot of, uh, uh, background and, and guidance on what counties can and cannot. So she's bad.
Amy Delinky.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep. Uh, I just wanna thank Commissioner Jelzinski, I know he put a lot of work into this, uh, he was involved right early on. Uh, as I was involved early on and then got busy with other stuff, well, he kind of picked up the ball and, and ran with it. And did the, the heavy lifting and sounds like we've got a good workable plan here. With the committee, uh, making recommendations, that makes a lot more sense than, uh, us trying to make recommendations as a board. We've got the experts there at the table that makes recommendations for how this money is utilized, so appreciate that.
I think the, the other positive is that, uh, we're basically setting up a funded perpetuity. This is a problem that's not gonna go away quickly and I think I just read Grashit County, I think lump sum dispersed to their funds and it's gone. Uh, so if there's opportunities in the future, they may not have the funds to exercise. This is a different approach to it. And, uh, we'll keep the annual, uh, interest and, and, on investment, uh, being pumped into, uh, programs should be for residents.
I think the committee also have an opportunity to go after grants, which could possibly increase that funding mechanism, so. Where we might not be, um, we'll be doable, getting distracted at times, so.
That's it. Any other comments?
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you, you three for all your hard work, dude.
Yes, thank you. And we will move that item to, uh, next week's board meeting. Uh, excited to, to move and take some action on that. It's been a long road and a lot of work. Item number three, consider approving the new rate increase for the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility as presented and outlined in the fee-based services transactions tape.
Good morning.
Morning.
The fiscal year twenty-six budget discussions with Administrator Controller Smith and the Finance Director led to a push for exploring methods to offset some of our costs. Looking at some of the areas where we can improve, we realize that the service fees have remained unchanged for twenty years, while material disposal costs continue to rise. Currently, there's a significant gap between the fee charged and the actual expenses incurred. Um, for example, the antifreeze that we take into the facility, we charge the residents twenty-five cents per gallon when they bring it in. It is then, uh, disposed of in a fifty-five gallon drum where we hold it until full, when we call the company to come out, costs us seventy-five dollars in charges to have that hauled away. At twenty-five cents a gallon, that means that we're only bringing in thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents to go towards those disposal costs. So in the end, it is actually costing us sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents to get rid of that drum. And that's just one example of the things that we found when we went, uh, across the board, looking at some burden disposal costs. Um, you'll see on the staff report, I kind of outlined, on the back shows the fee-based services where the current rate is, along with a new suggested rate. Under that, uh, we, we didn't include the black bins that we have that we sell to the curbside residents for purchase. And the reason for that is, is the prices fluctuate so much on that, that we would need to make, um, we need to set that price at the time that we purchase those bins. To be able to cover our costs as well as the shipping. The other thing that we didn't include in that was the fee for the out-of-county residents, um. At this time, we're, we're asking for that to remain unchanged as we continue to work through the materials management planning. Uh, with the surrounding counties and that may be something that we visit later on down the road, once we start, once we, um. Set. What is, what is, some of the, um. Other things through that material management planning. So, some of the other things that we've been looking at as, uh, maybe implementing in or increasing fees associated with trucking. Currently, we service two townships, two villages and the tribe in our curbside program and if, we have never increased our rates since we started that program. The other thing that we do is the, uh, roll, with roll-off trucks, we service eleven depot sites, the casino, the tribe and other county departments. We have never charged any fees for, uh, for these locations for pickup and have started to look at the possibility of maybe a trip charge to help cover some of those costs. Those are things that will take a little bit longer to move forward with as we would have to look at re, rewriting and renegotiating some of those contracts. As well as coming up with something for the, um, roll-off end of things. And that'll take a little bit more time to work through, uh, the fee increases for the fee-based services are the changes that we can make now and recover some of our costs immediately.
Some of the, some of the depot charges as far as, um, departments within the county itself, that'll, uh, realistically will end up as, uh. The charge backs through, uh, indirect costs is, is kind of what we're looking at, so we need to kind of look to see where that, uh, will fall and, and how all of that negotiated out.
If you implement, uh, these drop-off site fees, would they be charged to the local unit of government that's housing the?
It would, and that's part of the reason why we're looking at it and know that that is a political issue that needs to be handled very delicately. And approached, um, and just in that manner, uh, to, to make sure that we're making that communication to find out whether it is something that the, you know, local units would even consider, um, helping to pay for. So, you know, we understand the political, um, issues that there is with that and, and we wanna work through that in, in an appropriate manner.
Some of that is, I've had some conversation with some of the, um, townships and there are some that have interest in possibly purchasing their own bins and or have, have stated that. You know, for us to charge them a minimal amount, they would be willing to, uh, entertain that idea. Some of them, I think it's, is it Isabella Township is a Rosebush area. They had the clerk for that township actually came and took a tour of the facility and she stated that they have all that solar money that's sitting there that they could allocate for some of those things.
Some, some of it's that, uh, funding, some of it's, um, uh, marijuana funding within some of the townships. That's part of the reason why they're, they're receptive to it. Some of the other townships may not be, uh, because they don't have funding. So that's why, uh, like I say, that is, it's a political issue that needs to be worked through very delicately.
Well. Yeah, this has all been put through the advisory committee, uh, so we've been looking at these numbers and. Agreed that this probably needs to be ready, so just know that we've, the advisory committee has already seen these numbers, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm so glad this is happening. I mean, twenty years, come on, this inflation alone, but also, uh, I'm, I think it's encouraging the townships to get more involved and. Understand the processes, I mean, it's an enterprise department, right? And, uh, I think this should please.
Please understand that these conversations come up with previous administrators and, um, they've been a non-starter. But that's, from that side of things, so I do wanna note that, that, you know, it's not like we've been sitting here not wanting to do anything, um, we have and we've looked at. Um, and in fact, uh, in two thousand six, I had come to the administrator at the time on raising curbside rates, rewriting the contracts. And, uh, and it was an absolute heart, you know, uh, we're not doing any of that, so. Um, now in two thousand six. You know, we're in that area.
Yeah.
Um, actually, I'm kind of surprised by these current rates, you know, a quarter to drop off oil or antifreeze. I mean, and even bumping that up to a buck and a half is still pretty nominal. Cost, I think, if you got your oil changed at a garage or some service, they charge more than that as a disposal. As a disposal deal or a recycling fee. And that's really what, you know, what our costs are on it. It's just that, you know, the companies that come in to pick up that material, you know, that's, that's the fees associated with what the original set prices were. And, you know, there's just been no increases on it all the time. And I'm sure there's going to be some residents that's going to not be real happy with the dollar and fifty cent increase in a bag of yard waste, but. And we've also implemented some tools that you'll see through, just through normal cash transactions through the facility that we we've found a calculator that program that allows us to, we can take the size of a trailer, the dimensions of a trailer, and just kind of measure the height of it so that it gives us an exact dollar figure as far as cubic yards are concerned. This year, even without this implementation, I think you're going to see fifteen to twenty thousand dollars increase just because we're calculating it. And we're getting pushed back residents on it because they think that, well, geez, you've only charged me this much in the past. And the explanation is, as we continue forward with it, is that, yeah, and we understand that we were not calculating it right on our side. And just trying to make sure that staff is universal all the way through it. So the message is the same that, you know, we are being very specific about it. Because, you know, we need to be able to generate that material to handle that backend load, especially on brush and yard waste, to be able to get rid of that material.
Yeah, I think what we're finding is like with the Heartland Group is that a lot of these counties are doing the same issues that we're dealing with. So like you brought up yard waste and everything, it's spoken. So if the group could have a flipper, it moved that around and chip it, it'd reduce the volume of it. That was one of the things where the counties working together could actually, you know, go together, purchase this piece of equipment. And, you know, chip that down and take, you know, it'd be less, easier to handle, less material down, so. That's some of the advantages going forward with the other counties to maybe share some of these issues because it seems like a lot of the counties are having the same issues that we're at.
And the other good part of that in the, in the end, looking long-sighted, and that's that, you know, that's something when it comes to, you know, we're talking about yard waste, but looking at the merchant sheet management side of it, debris management, that's something that if there's a, you know, if it's a joint, whether it's a single county owned, if Isabella County moves forward with a, say, a two percent request or something along that line for management, it's something that could be leased to these other counties, you know, so there may be some revenue that could be generated, some of something to that nature as well.
As a Mount Pleasant and and Union Township rep of those citizens, I'm very supportive of, you know, the Christmas tree and up and oil and and antifreeze and and all that type of ways to get rid of it. But I have to say that the, you know, hundred and fifty percent increase or more in yard waste and brush for those citizens is is a lot to swallow. And I, I do think that the MRF is, as a service, we provide to those citizens, and it helps my citizens and my neighborhoods look good because we can maintain the, those areas and and have a place to get rid of brush. And so if we pass this, I would like us to keep a very close eye on how that yard wasted and brush use goes, whether it goes down, whether there are complaints. And and I'd hope that this board would be willing to lower those costs if if we have issues because we're government, we're services, and providing those areas with outlets so that we have a nice community is important. So I just want to state that I understand raising it after twenty years and and doing that, and especially with chemicals and oils and antifreeze and tires and things like that. I think every citizen thinks, you know, we've got to pay to get rid of those. It's not like a freebie. But it's a little more difficult with brush because they always think, well, it's just going to chip them and go into compost or whatever, and they don't think about that handling of that. But on the flip side, you know, we've got, we've got to, you know, maintain some service. So to sum it all up, we need to keep a close eye on that. And if it goes down, I I hope that you will come back to the board.
No, we completely understand, Commissioner. It is going to be more of a burden on the individual that brings that material in. And, you know, we're trying to set what we think is a reasonable fee. And at some point, if you as the governing body for this county feel that it needs to come back more in line with whatever, you know, we understand that, we will go at your direction. Absolutely.
Right. I mean, we'll certainly, I mean, if if we hear from our constituents, bring it to the board, but there, there may be more comments towards you, you know, when they, when they hand over the money, right? So it's got to go both ways.
I've been out there, the Murph a couple of times, and I noticed that you've got huge piles of brush, and I suspect it's from the last storm. And that's going to be an additional burden on property owner that loses a large tree or trees to clean that mess up and having to turn around and pay big dollars to have it disposed of unless somebody else does it for them.
In a lot of cases, when it comes to, especially within the city of Mount Pleasant, that is, they do hire somebody to do that. I'm not saying that that's, you know, every case, but for the most part, it is somebody that's been hired to do it. And most, you know, when it comes to yard waste companies, they have to be licensed in Isabella County as far as transporting on yard waste, just like major waste haulers have to be licensed. And they get a fee sheet every year as to what their fees are. So if they are hiring somebody, they, that company that is being hired understands what that fee is. And, you know, and I'm sure that they're base, making sure that they're passing that on.
So when you're at full, full capacity with all this brush in your holding area, I noticed you've got a front-end loader that's moving it. Probably moving it to a contractor that's moving it out, or?
Right now, we're, we're running it back into a storage area that we have, but we're right at the edge of where we have to get some things shipped up and and moved because we are close to capacity of what our holding or carrying capacity is from the state level.
I live in the city, and so I know that the city has a chipper and all that, fees and all that. But do they use it all the time? I mean, could they loan it to us or anything?
Oh, in conversations on that.
Cool.
Very much in conversation on that as we, as we speak, so.
You know, I'd like to add that, keep in mind that we were able to keep the cost where it was for so long because we had a more bark or a bandit each year. We would reach out to them and they would come out and demo their new equipment for the year. So it really didn't cost us that much to be able to chip up that, that material and get rid of it. So that's why we were able to keep it at such a low cost. But now we're to the point where we can't get anybody to come out and demo anymore, and it's going to cost us to be able to get rid of that material. That's the reason for the, for the price increase.
I, I know the city, I think, charge is twenty dollars to pick up, and they'll, they'll chip like pickup load.
More than that.
Yeah, I think more than five or thirty-five.
Okay.
I think I put out four truckloads at one time, and they still did it. But didn't, and I was like, just expecting an extra charge, so.
You have to make a point, maybe, and I'll add to you.
And if your tree falls down in a storm and and part of it's in the street, they'll take the whole thing out.
Yeah, I know, it's just yesterday, something like that.
Which is nice. So move your tree to the street.
With all the satellite locations as far as the townships, how many do we currently have?
There's eleven total depot sites.
Okay.
As it stands right now, so. So, you know, and that's, like you said, that's something that we're, we're looking at. And, you know, we, we want to start them conversations. We'll start getting to Michigan Township Association meetings, things of that nature to be able to at least gauge interest or support.
Are those dumped weekly?
Some of them are dumped two or three times a week. Some of them are dumped, I don't think we have anything that's, well, we do. Brumfield Township has dumped me, I think, once a month.
Okay.
That's the least. Everything else is once a week, and sometimes two and three times a week, some of them. Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, move on to. Item four is consider approving the request to increase processing fees for the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility from sixty dollars to sixty-five dollars per ton for clean separated material with less than ten percent residual and eighty-five dollars to ninety dollars per ton of single commodity material with ten percent or above residual effective October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
In March twenty nineteen, we implemented a processing fee for waste haulers to help cover our operation costs. The fees helped the facility recover some of those, some of those costs by rising labor costs necessitate an increase in these processing fees to help us recoup some of the rising costs. The proposed fees would still be below other facilities in Michigan and around the U.S. When we implemented the processing fee, we established a two-tier system to encourage the delivery of cleaner recyclable materials. And that's the reason for the sixty dollars for the clean material and the eighty-five for the material with more residual. And then it's mostly the single stream material that we're currently bringing into the facility, all the stuff that we're bringing in from the city. So, yeah, it's pretty, we need to increase our rates. We're suggesting the five dollars per ton to help recover some of our costs. And asking that that become effective October first, so that way that allows us time to be able to notify the waste haulers and for them to make the adjustments and us make adjustments on our attitude.
Residual just means non-recyclable material.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that ten percent of, I know, Director Board doesn't like to hear us because that's, we bring it up every meeting. What's a residual rate? And it's been pretty good lately. I mean, it's been really good, dumber, but what's above ten percent? All that stuff costs the facility because we have to take it to the landfill. They charge for that, so. That ten percent dumber is, anything under that, it's, you get over ten percent, and then it's cost so much extra money. They'll subrate that out. Question.
Realistically, what it really about, you know, I mean, I antiquated to so that you have a really good understanding of it. If I get over ten percent residual, I have to have the, the compactor, the trash compactor pull more than once a week. Under ten percent, I can keep it at once a week. You know, and I think I'm, I, I don't remember exactly, but I, I think we're at six hundred and seventy-five dollars a pull on the compactor. So, you know, I mean, if I have to have twice a week, you know, I mean, you're just doubling your numbers. That's why that ten percent is critical. And and we knows that that affects our, you know, the cost on everything else. Yeah.
So the processing fees stayed the same since two thousand and nineteen? And how much have the labor fees increased? I assume that they have increased dramatically from two thousand and twenty-two.
Well, the fees are going to increase again January.
Now, labor fees, labor costs.
Labor costs.
Yeah, they're, they're going to continue to increase because of the state minimum wage. You're going to continue to see that. We're going to see it again this January, and we're going to see it again next January. Because I think in, what is it, twenty-seven, I think is where it tops at fifteen. So we, we know absolutely there is going to be that increase.
Obviously, I've not died into how you're doing your numbers, but I certainly like, I guess, some ex-fundation justification for why it's only like a ten percent change increase when I, I would guess that your labor fees are almost doubling since two thousand and nineteen.
They are, but that's one of them where we have to stay within market rate throughout.
But we're below, you said we're below other sites, right?
Right. Right, we are. We're still, we're probably only maybe five dollars a ton. I think right now Kent County is running it right around ninety or ninety-five dollars a ton. I think they're at ninety-five, in fact, which puts us still a little bit below them. But what we're trying to do is we're trying not to lose material in it being hauled someplace else because that's some of the balance that we have to keep an eye on on whether that material gets hauled somewhere else to be able to be processed or not. Because then it becomes a logistics issue of, you know, when you look at the logistics side of it, you're looking at whether that's a, it's cheaper for them to haul it somewhere or have it processed through local means.
So you're saying, so we're five dollars below a ton compared to the grass shit?
Yes, well, I don't look at, you, you can't look at individual county. I have to look at where other Murfs are and what that charge is on other Murfs. You know, so you have, you have facilities in, in Kent County, Driver City. There is one that is getting finished up right now. It's owned by Flint. And then other than that, there's one that they're working on. There's Emmett County all the way to the north. They're working on one, and I think it's Potaski. But that's not, and in fact, I, in a conversation with Potaski, to take some of the material that they can't get rid of because of logistics issue. So when we, when we base the tipping fees or the processing fee, we base them on our dollar charges in in different, and they're not just, it's not a set county. It's just different areas within the state and what them transportation costs and everything that's involved with it.
Yeah, some of the issues is right now we're the dual stream. And so unless we get to single stream, I saw we're at a big disadvantage. Can't continue at the dual stream, continue operating. Once you get to a single stream, labor costs will go down, then you'll have an opportunity for a bigger market share to get in there. So it's kind of a game changer as far as what we're doing now and then. And like I said, dual stream is not sustainable. So some of these conditions is making sure we maintain market share until we actually get more competitive, so.
Certainly defer to you guys and and the board, but, you know, like to hear the thought process, right, this. You know, we're doubling fees for residents and and only increase ten percent for short-lead entities. Kind of burdens, right? So.
So basically, our overhead cost is much greater than what we're thinking.
As far as you're talking about, as far as the offset cost, what the county covers as our general.
That's just the whole package. And where we at as far as?
Leveling up, I think this will move us in.
Next year, we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand from the County General Fund to cover expenses in the recycling.
And is that standard yearly?
It's been going on for a few years now. It's hovered between two and three hundred from what I gather, looking back at the past. So it's been a annual, but there's also, let's say, we three fifty that goes over. They didn't have cost allocation plan, indirect cost back of like a hundred thousand. So the net is about two fifty. But that just helps cover some of the cost of administration and everything else, and IT and everything that goes with it, so.
Yes, sir. Just a comment on, you said Bob Corporate. Fact that Corporate is going to pass their prices on to the individual, it's going to eventually impact the the individual that's. the individual that's gonna be there recycling, it's a matter.
They got a two-year contract with Ranger. But, and they'll move their fees up whether or not you do. We do every time, so um, I, I'm saying, you know, be, being under, you know, I'll, I'll leave it to you on, on whether or not you're gonna lose uh, supply. Cuz I, I don't have a good deal for that. I'll let you know that I don't think our residents should. Uh, I should, it's, you guys provide a great service, and I wanna keep that service for my residents. And, and I think it's something we should provide uh, at the, a low cost for them. Corporations, they're gonna make money. And they're gonna charge more whether we do or not, so uh. Well, hopefully, when we get to single stream, uh, we can keep our rates and lower our costs. But uh, that still weighs off, I'm sure.
Well, that's the conversations that we've been having. If we don't control this facility, it's that eventually prices for everybody will go way up. And I'll be completely profit. Either one of the waste haulers will, will basically control the market.
Yeah.
Part, and, and that's part of the issue with part one fifteen is, is that, you know, like the city of Mount Pleasant is gonna be required by the state of Michigan. Uh, it doesn't mean that the other townships or municipalities in Isabella County are gonna have to have recycle, uh, single stream recycling. But the city of Mount Pleasant is gonna be required by the state because there's more than five thousand residents. So, and then that's every city in the state of Michigan, if you have more than five thousand residents. It is a requirement as it moves forward with material management planning that you have to have uh, curb site recycling. So, you know, that's, that's part of the reason why we, we look at all of that and understand, uh, you know, ramifications for uh, you know, city residents or, you know, uh, that municipality of five thousand. But, you know, as it stands, like I said, for us, it's only uh, the city of Mount Pleasant, but uh, you know, we have curb sites in other areas as well, but uh, that's all part of what the whole thinking process is we through all.
That's right.
Yeah, I just wanna point out one thing. You know, we go to these intergovernmental meetings every now and then. But the pulling out of the process by the city was a nasty uh, blow to us and it was never mentioned in those meetings. And I was very disappointed and it really affected us. So I'm glad about that five thousand thing. I think that's really good cuz like counties north of us hardly have any recycling at all. And so I think that's a very good government thing to do.
I would defend Mount Pleasant purely in the fact that um, they provide curbside recycling, single stream for us now. And so they moved forward without us. We're, we're behind them. We're gonna get there with single stream, you know. Yeah, the only way to, to, to get your residents to, to recycle more is, is to do single stream. Cuz no one wants to separate the stuff out. So, you know, if Mount Pleasant has to leave us behind for a couple of years while we get our facility ready, that's what they did. And I, I defend that, and I'm, I'm happy we're recycling more in Mount Pleasant.
And then.
I just.
I just wanna reply.
Yeah, so the only thing is, Steve, I, you know, definitely, I want to always want to stream. But the point is, why would have intergovernmental meetings if you don't let people know what's going on? This was a nasty surprise. We were not informed about it and had detrimental effect on our. Just to head up.
I see, yeah, yeah, certainly.
And the only thing I could say on uh, with the city of Mount Pleasant, we're still bringing that material in. Um, and to be honest, we are seeing an increase in the amount of material. Uh, you know, we were getting that material before, uh, and I, uh, I can't give you the exact numbers off the top of my head right now. But um, I do know that that tonnage has increased um, month over month from what it originally was at dual stream with MMI bringing it compared to what it is coming in, uh, tonnage wise. Uh, I think we're, I, I'm guessing, but I think we're up at least fifty tons already uh, a year. Uh, and it, and it may be one of them. And we're gonna continue to see that. And that's historical all the way across everything when it comes to recycling, uh, going to a curb site cart, it does increase your tonnage.
Any other questions, comments?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, guys. I don't need to really just.
No, no, I, hey.
We need that.
We, we need that. We need to be challenged with.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, consider, we'll, we will move that item to next week's uh, board meeting. And item five is consider approving the payment of Motorola milestone ten in the amount of four hundred nine thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents for the radio tower project.
Repeat. Uh, so we have one more payment after this one. Um, I will request that payment as soon as this one is paid uh, next week. Um, that will solve all of those uh, Motorola uh, payments and we'll have those big numbers off. Then I'll be able to confirm with uh, MPSCS and DTMB from the state that we have about ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-some dollars left for the CMU just central dispatch backup center project. That'll come, that invoice will come actually from uh, the vendor ProCom who's doing that work. So that'd be pretty simple to process through, when the mesh, zero that fund out, and they will not be in front of you on milestones or Motorola or towers or anything. But it's just another one in line, so it's uh, coming down the pipe, so.
It's good. Uh, personally, I have not get, gotten tired of hearing about this. It's a great project.
It is.
And the, the state uh, ponied up with four point eight million dollars uh, for us to increase technology and, and to make uh, law enforcement and, and rescues and, and all of that stuff better here in Isabella County.
Always a good thing we get our tax dollars back home.
Yep.
Thank you. And we'll move that item to next week's uh, meeting. And item six is consider approving prime contract change order number thirty-seven of park construction. And in that additional amount of thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, authorized board chairman to sign the same. And I think we have Heidi, uh, senior project manager, I can hit Scandal online.
Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi. Good to see everybody. Uh, yes, we have actually two PCCOs. Um, first one here is, um, the total is thirty thousand four seventy-nine. Um, the, after this PCCO, we have zero dollars left in buyout. And total contingency after this PCCO is seven hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Kind of going through the items real quick for you. Um, our first one is PCO number two forty-three. Uh, this is in the Sally Court. We had uh, um, CO2 sensors in there to detect carbon dioxide. And we did not need two of the sensors, so credit back to the county was one thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. That was added to buyout. The next item was number is two seventy-three. Uh, this is a credit for um, not installing a few um, floor receptibles. Um, and that was a credit of five hundred and twenty-one dollars, and that went into buyout. The next item is for um, some items that we found after the building was turned over. Um, so item number two seventy-five, um, the Sally Court, um, in the south side of the Sally Court there. Uh, way the slope is on that drive, it would run into, there's about five parking spaces back there for um, work release people. And we found that the slope there was large enough where it would round down the side of the um, uh, parking spaces. It kind of rode away there. Um, so what we end up doing is putting the drain and some boulders there to help it um, stop that erosion at that backside of that parking lot. Um, that was a cost of two hundred or two thousand five hundred dollars. And then um, at the north side of the building, um, where the employee entrance was, we found that um, during the winter that we had blowing snow and ice buildup. And um, so we ended up putting a fence along that area there and to help ensure that we don't have any slip and falls and be able to remove that snow a little bit easier there. So um, the cost to install that is six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Both of these items were taken from buyout, or I'm sorry, contingency. Um, moving on to the next item is uh, number two seventy-six. This item here um, is a back charge between um, William Reichenbach um, and Strauss. We found that some masonry walls were not built um, at the video courtroom um, rooms. There was three walls there that needed to be um, completed and then one along the um, between the book, or not booking. Um, oh, shoot, where they come in off of the main entry of the building. Um, so there's actually a total of four walls uh, total. Um, that was a sound impact issue. Um, so we had a drywall put in, um, some sound insulation and uh, caulked the top of the walls there. And um, so that was a back charge to Strauss cuz that masonry wall was not installed. Uh, so there's no cost to the county. Next item, the last one there is uh, item number two seventy-seven. This here was a cost that came up in an RFI. There was no um, rough in shown on drawings. Um, this one kind of got lost in the mixture of construction. I had asked for some more detail from the contractor. And um, when we were reconciling contracts here, this kind of came up. So this was kind of my fault here. I did not, uh, kind of got lost in the mix here. And I apologize for not bringing this to the county sooner. Um, but this was an add of two, or twenty-three thousand three forty-six. Um, the taken from buyout was twenty thousand five forty-seven and from contingency, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Um, like I mentioned, this was a total of thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars with zero dollars remaining in buyout. And your total contingency was seven hundred and seventy thousand one twenty-five. Any questions?
Yeah. Heidi, uh, the sheriff, I'm just gonna talk for a second.
Okay.
Just a quick update where we're kind of at. Uh, we're, we're really coming to the close of this whole project uh, after a very long, arduous time. So I'll be glad when it's done, but um, we do have some things, you know, uh, there's some more new work being done, um, which few things have failed, but that's, I think it's, that's normal. We need to talk other places that have built, built those uh, buildings like this. Uh, I'd rather they fail right now cuz we're not on our, our dime. Um, get them fixed or whatever. Uh, we worked very diligently on all kinds, kinds of things along with IT. Uh, we are really close to kind of being at the point of we're done. There is one thing we had, we got an RTU unit on the roof, uh, that Steve and the vendors are working on. Uh, the only thing that I just wanna keep in the purview is we have in the kitchen, uh, a potential issue. We're gonna see once we get the RTU uh, HVAC units fixed. Um, there may or may not be some coils there. We're, we're pulling heat in from outside. Uh, we are way over um, uh, temperature ranges that are susceptible by MDLC in there. We've had some, make some changes, which kind of creates some security and concerns. So once that's done, that may be the only thing that's really left on this plate uh, to, to fix if there's an issue there. But we really don't know what that looks like until we get all the HVAC units back up and running. So other than that, uh, the furniture funds and stuff, I, I told the administrator a couple of days ago, we had exhausted those. We're done with that. So we're just, we're coming right down to the end to do close out. Uh, everything on, uh, is being uh, kind of adjusted and worked on and made right, so. Just a, just an update. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I, I did have uh, some uh, constituents that, you know, with the Hands on Museum and stuff, that would like us to increase some more landscaping, uh, that they see it as kind of sparse. And I know there's a lot of evergreen use there, which have a short lifespan. So I'm just thinking, yeah, in the future, you might wanna like work with English group and uh, get some uh, deciduous trees in uh, that where we wouldn't be putting a building. So we won't have to cut it down, but um, just, uh, you know, I'm not talking about a, a big process, but uh.
I know there's very specific things township required. We, we did comply with those, obviously, um, not that you can't add more.
Right, 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 so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Indian Township definitely has a, a lot of sightline, you know, regulations.
Mr. Joneson's.
So I've looked into the property from a distance too, and I agree, it looks kind of bland without uh, some, something to soften the landscape. But there are, uh, having applied for many, many grants over the years for parks, there are uh, consumers' energy, there's state grants for forestry that probably work through parks and recreation to get good trees uh, for that at a greatly reduced budget cost.
I think the cost would be the key factor there of, you know, maintaining and, and.
Water.
Yeah, watering them and that kind of stuff. So, you know, we're watching dollars and diamonds, but uh, that doesn't mean the next year or two that we can't review that and see if there's some opportunity there, right? Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, we'll move that item to next week's meeting. And item seven is consider approving prime con, prime contract change order number thirty-eight. Park construction in the net deduction amount of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and authorized board chairperson to sign the same.
Heidi, this wraps up our contract with the county. Uh, we did have some staffing um, left over. So that credit to the county is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and nine dollars. That also deducts the remaining contingency from our contract. And that cost where uh, our credit to the county is seven hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for total credit to the county of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Are there any questions?
And to kind of go along with this, uh, Finance Director Whitmer and myself have a conference call with uh, USDA as we're getting close to finalizing this loan on what is uh, the closeout procedures that they're gonna require and how everything's gonna roll, kind of get it tied up with a nice bow for everything. So we do have that call set up for this Thursday on that, just making you aware of that.
Be nice to get this wrapped up.
Yes.
To get money back.
This is the last we see in Titan.
Are you gonna come to some of our meetings, Heidi, just to say hi every now and then?
Well, I frequent the jails still quite often, so you see the staff there, um. What's that, Sheriff?
In official capacity, right?
Right. Yes, um, in fact, the other day I was talking to someone, she's like, you're here like every week, you know, and you're no big deal. So I was just like, okay, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but um, it's been a pleasure to working with the county, working with the sheriff's office. Um, wonderful people you were able to work with and um, a bittersweet that this is done and over with, but I will make sure that we do stay in touch, so. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody.
Likewise, Heidi. You've been great to work with through this project.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you get a ten-star review.
Oh, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will move that to next week's board meeting. And brings us down to item eight, consider approving the sixth district regional mutual aid agreement and authorized board chairperson to sign the same.
Morning.
Morning.
So this is a mutually agreement with the system, uh, emergency management, uh, other counties. So if a disaster ever did happen to our, that we would have, we should move with all the other members of the system, the state of Michigan. So this is just a, a signature on the mutually agreement that states that we are part of the and forth, if something happens. Will there be sources in our community?
Yes, sir.
Chad, what is, what are the, there, uh, is that the same as the Congress, uh, congressional district or is this a separate?
This is a separate just for emergency management, uh, on the very back page of the.
Oh, okay, sure.
There's a list of the counties that are involved in the six districts here, so.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we would hold sources from.
I see what you're saying, you, yep.
It's always amazing how many different paths we have, cuz everybody draws a reach differently, so. Region you belong in, I mean, everybody draws the path differently, so it's always nice to look at, so now we're going west instead of.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, and we'll move that item to next week's meeting and brings us down to number nine. Consider approving moving forward with Isabella County assuming the role of the administrative unit for the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. Authorized board chair, uh, the Isabella County Board of Commissioners to sign any and all related contracts and agreements that are currently in place between Saginaw County and. That are currently in place between Saginaw County and Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works that have the assigned language in the contract.
Okay, so we had a presentation a few months ago from uh Kristen Wentzall. From Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works about the county being a fiduciary, but the technical role as administrative unit for the. In our local agreement that is signed between Bay, Saginaw, Midland, Grashit and Isabella Counties for uh workforce training services. This is the next step. There's currently about eighty contracts out there. They're more service related. One of them would be, for example. There's a contract with Delta College to provide early apprentice training, and so it's a contract. That is between uh Delta and technically it was with Saginaw, but it's uh for Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. Services. So most of these contracts that I'm asking. For the board to uh basically preauthorize the chairman to sign would have assignment language in it. Now, when I say assignment language, that basically is just a line that's put in the contract, existing contract, for example. If there's a change in fiscal agent for con- the contracting agency, the new fiscal agent. Will assume all responsibilities as named fiscal agent under this agreement. And be the successor in interest to the prior fiscal agent under this agreement. As you can tell, it was modified by an attorney. And so. This was shared uh originally was brought up by Saginaw County. Um we made a few tweaks after thrown asked for a few tweaks. So instead of having to bring eighty contracts in front of the board, this language would be put in those. And then we would simply be able to sign them administratively uh by the chairman. Any new contracts that were not previously approved by Saginaw County and that does not have a designer language. Those contracts would then come individually in front of the Board of Commissioners through the regular process. Uh the, this has been going on as it stayed in the background. I the only thing I could find is there was a goal setting session held on April thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. So it's uh been well over two years as this has been ongoing and so. It'll be nice to get this wrapped up and ready to go by October first this year.
Go ahead. Do I go first?
If you guys want these brought for the board, we can go through them, because I gotta go through the eighty some contracts for guys, so. Um it's up to the board as far as is go through these, but uh. I figure if I got it, hey, that's everybody else should, but if you guys really want it, it it could go through there. Either I'll concurrent, there's anything that's new or different from what's already in there, it has to be brought towards the board, but uh it's up to the board, whatever they want to do.
I I agree. I think when this was first brought up in two thousand twenty-three, the board was very supportive being the fiduciary. But I have an associated uh issue. Uh I know when ninety early voting, the uh townships. Municipalities would have to do their own uh. And I'm not sure where where they're at with this, uh their own administration of the voting. Uh they were looking at the county possibly being a fiduciary for the for the townships. And I know I did contact Ryan, asked him about, you know, what are the concerns and all? And I sense that there was concerns dealing with some of the new fringe benefit uh requirements and the work associated with that. It's gonna be the same thing with uh Michigan, Michigan Works. We're gonna have that work. Michigan Works is gonna cover the direct and indirect costs. The townships, if they decide to go. And ask formally ask the township to be a fiduciary for the ninety early voting. It's basically the same thing, but it's gonna be much smaller in scope, and I would hope that we give our local township. Townships that kind of uh courtesy and satisfaction to to look at that. If that's what they really need to uh conduct the ninety early voting.
Sure.
Yeah, I and it did take two years, but when we first got posed to us, there was a lot of questions. Into it, so we had to do a lot of digging, but first we weren't very happy with the agreement, I think. Till we got digging into it, making sure that it was gonna be actually good for the county to do it. Because uh we didn't want to take on liability and cost us more money, and it turned out it'll be a pretty good. Deal for the county, but there was a lot of questions ahead to be answered.
For this, I want to point out the uh. The County General Fund will have a positive indirect cost of two hundred two thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh for fiscal year twenty-six, so it has a um. The first number of months, there will be a lot of time that will be put into it. But after that, once we get everything smoothed over and everything like that. Uh we think that with existing staff that we're gonna be able to take this on seamlessly. They do have their own financial staff, they have their own accounts, they have their own team that takes care of it all. They're mainly utilizing the county uh because they themselves cannot assume the fiduciary roles, and I put in. Here that um they what the roles of the consortium board, self-selected counties from the county's administrative unit, and it's just a. Has the four bullet points. I, in my opinion, this is a, to me, a separate issue than the nine day early voting, but that's my. Own opinion, and I'll leave it up for the board to discuss.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of the issue had to do with some of the benefits of the birds and who was responsible. There was maybe a long-term. Uh liability for the county, and it turns out there will not be, so. Well, that was one of the issues that were holding a lot of it up is understanding that uh. Yeah, those those like they legendary or legacy costs. Uh that we weren't gonna have to incur any of those, so have some of the questions that we had.
It's a hundred percent paid by.
Liability to the county.
The other part of this, yes, it does bring us uh in a little bit of money uh from indirect costs, a couple hundred thousand. The other part is that it saves Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works a significant amount of money, and I don't remember that dollar figure.
Think another couple hundred thousand, because the way Saginaw County does like their defined benefit, they spread it evenly amongst. Every per full-time employee. Uh the way Isabella County does it, we do do it by unit, so corrections just has their liability. They're not assuming liability from other ones. And so what happened is that Saginaw County's liability overall, they were. Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works was paying their slug, and then they had to pay additional slug as a technical employee of Saginaw County, so they were paying. Few hundred thousand dollars more on an annual basis, so this is a hundred, couple hundred thousand more that can go back into services. For uh the Michigan Works, so that's a great point, Commissioner.
Yep, money that can go towards job training.
Yes.
Things that Michigan Works does, so.
And I did separate, uh you'll see when we get into town that, you know, I'll go into more detail, it's just that MERS has specific requirements as far as signing it. So that's why they're separated off as different motions.
Okay. The other questions, comments on this item? If not, we will move that to next week's agenda and bring this down to item ten. Consider approving the joint transfer agreement between Saginaw County, Isabella County, and Municipal Employees Benefit System of Michigan. That will cover the MERS defined benefit plan, the MERS defined contribution plan, and the MERS healthcare savings plan. As outlined in the attached joint transfer agreement and authorize a board chairperson to sign the same.
So here it requires a specific uh separate motion by the Board of Commissioners to. Basically assume the roles of all the MERS retirement plans. With all the different addendums and the different plans, the defined benefit, fine contribution. Healthcare savings plans and everything else and amendments, there was like thirteen, fourteen of them. Uh which only the latest ones are the valid, but they all have to be signed because there are certain retirees that would be under the impact of those different plans, so. The uh, this was prepared by MERS. And so if the county board does approve this, then this would go off to Saginaw County for their approval and signature. And that would go off to MERS for their approval and signature as well on this joint transfer agreement of the MERS into Isabella County. And again. All of this right here will be ring fenced like all of our other ones on the MERS within specifically Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works. So if it goes up and, you know, it's on them to pay for it, there's. I believe only one active member, the defined benefit, has been closed up a number of years ago. Um so it's just kind of mirrors what the county said with the with the exception of the healthcare savings plan.
And that's separate from Isabelle County's contribution, so they're.
Right.
It's separate, so they're not gonna count. Plus or minus against.
Right, right, and so the MERS uh, when we get our MERS stuff, like. Bills, whatever, it's broken up by the different units, the different ones like that, so that way uh finance, when we're doing the budget. You know, Chris can see that, okay, commissioner or not commissioner, but the uh corrections, their liability is this, and it's allotted. Specifically to those full-time employees, is that department.
The other questions? Comments? All right, we will move that item to next week's meeting. And item eleven is consider approving the health insurance cost share structure with the Plan C employee share of zero percent. Of the total premium. Plan B employee cost share of seven point five percent of the total premium and Plan A. Employee cost share of fifteen percent of the total premium effective January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, so uh last year the board had approved uh that. The C plan, which was a high deductible, high copay, was going to be. Uh when you consider a free plan, if the employee wanted to buy up into the D plan, they basically paid for the HRA. Coverage of that, and if then if they wanted to go up to the A, they paid for that additional HRA coverage, which had less deductible copays. And so if you're looking at it, the employees were just paying that HRA portion. They weren't paying any increases to the actual insurance. So by going to more of a percentage of total cost, which would be your medical, your dental, your optical and your HRA. We want to get it to where they're covering all the HRA, plus we're starting to get a little bit more pay. Into the health insurance portion, because it wasn't sustainable. Moving forward of the county covering the thirteen and a half percent of the actual medical coverage that it was going on. And so this is a way to kind of get it to what most you units do, is that they will go to a fixed percentage. On the different plan options, and we want to get this approved. Uh before open enrollment, before the budget, that way the employees can then see what their costs would be. Versus A, B, and C moving forward on that, and so and then it also by. If implemented, this plan would save uh the county a hundred and twelve thousand for fiscal. Hundred and twelve thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-six if this uh percentage is uh implemented.
Yeah.
Is that a hundred and twelve thousand dollars over and above the increase in premium cost?
This is take like, I think we had a. How what was the percent uh increases like four or five hundred thousand? This basically saves a hundred and twelve thousand off that increase. So it's not saving from last year, this is saving a hundred and twelve thousand of the increase, so we're still. Have a have a sizable increase, but this is just shaving a hundred and twelve, but this will be better moving forward. Then you're adjusting some percentages and just put it out there that right now we're leaving fancy alone. We have, I think, twelve or fifteen people on this. So the effect is minimal. We'll see how everything, when people like coverage and stuff, that next year it's gonna be, you know. Based on what comes in, that we may not have a free plan anymore, that there may be some minimal. Numbers associated with, but again, that's just. Put it out there on uh why we left C alone, but we're working on B and A.
So is there another way of looking at the hundred and twelve thousands that we're charging our employees on your twelve thousand more, because we're saving them in twelve thousand on any health insurance?
You could.
Look at it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, because there was no, I I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, uh no.
There was no plan design, no coverage changes or anything like that, so uh well, no, that is it. Did I say that wrong? Do you have something else?
Just that, but no, there are no changes to any of the health coverages or plans, any, there there is a change there. The only change is that we are asking the folks shares some of the cost of the increases. The overall cost of the county increased to over five hundred thousand dollars.
I know, so. Health is a big burden by corporate and governments um. What, so? I I don't, I know we probably don't have, uh we did, you know, the next year's rates. For help yet, but so for example, for.
No, this, no, we do have, we do have next calendars used, that's why we're implementing.
For like a family plan for eight years, see what's the difference between last year and this year's rate?
Tim had prepared a sheet.
The very top end, I think.
I've got it. So if we were to leave, if we were just to do the existing HRA portion coverage. According to what Tiffany, let's say family for A. Which is your top end, it was gonna be a hundred and fifty-one dollars seventy-seven cents per pay period, okay? By going to this one, it's gonna go up thirty-six dollars to a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents per pay. So fifteen, eighteen dollars a week.
A week by month.
Yeah, we're paying uh every two weeks by monthly.
Yeah, seventy-two a month.
So it was so under the current formula, it was gonna be a hundred and fifty-one dollars roughly. With each, with the new rates for a family under the A plan. If you take this new percentage of fifteen percent for that, it goes from one fifty-one seventy-seven. To one eighty-seven twenty-six per pay, so out of twenty-six pays, you're gonna pay a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For each twenty-six pays. So it's an increase of like thirty-six dollars.
Twenty-six pays. It's how much?
Hundred and eighty-seven dollars twenty-six cents, and this is family for A, this is your top of the line, everything, you know. Top of the line coverage.
That's the difference, it's only that.
Six dollars, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it nine hundred.
Yeah. Right, right, but when we, when we looked at, and one of the things we, I wanted to do, and I think the board. Maybe I did articulate it well enough is that when we did the wage study, and we did this three-year plan, we're trying to get. Isabella County to the market and trying to get where the wages are at market, so when we're all trying to. Get get talent and stuff, we also realized that it's a very generous healthcare coverage, and so we got a little wiggle room, and we're just trying to balance. The uh compensation and your benefits into what would be a market-wide. But also protecting the financial condition of the county.
What was their rate increase from last year's?
Thirteen point five percent overall for everything.
Everything, yeah.
So it's thirteen point five percent for everything was our total rate increase.
Is that kind of extraordinary?
Went up as high as seventeen percent, twenty percent this year um our. Third party help administrator let us know um during, it all came in for a weekend, so. Doesn't feel like it, but it sounded you're very fortunate.
And Tim, I Tim's got more history on that?
Twenty-one percent the prior year, twenty point nine nine percent prior year, thirteen, just under thirteen.
So just so the board knows here, if you, if we have an average, and I don't know what the average employee wage is, but I'm just gonna say fifty thousand dollars. Because it's easy numbers for me to do with with the increase, where you're just under a two percent increase. Our our deduction from a wage, basically. So when we're increasing our wages by one percent, two percent, and for four percent. And to match these, I I mean, I want you guys to think about this in the future when we're talking about the wages, could we? With this healthcare, we're pulling two percent out of someone's wages that's making fifty percent, or fifty thousand dollars. Here, so uh and when we're like needle and diamond, two percent, it weighs you three so forth, you know. We did, I thought we did well this year, I think we're doing four percent. For October one, I can.
It's a two percent call, but we're. But we're mounting the weights of some.
Right, but we're implementing the ways, right, so um. We got two percent cola, but we're we're basically adding a two percent cola or two percent increase on wages here. Um I I'm not saying that we're not doing this, I'm just saying, keep that in mind. It's, you know, it's great to spin it that we're saving a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, but this is directly. At affecting our employees, which we're trying to keep, so. Um I know it's generous, but we we just gotta keep the stuff in mind. I know it's generous, but we, we just got to keep this stuff in mind.
I didn't mean to, you know, hear the generous stuff, but you know.
No, no, I have having an, an option for a health plan where, you know, if there's no cost. You know, gives people some room there. But I don't want employees to go with the no cost, and then they don't get healthcare because they're not going to pay that, that downtime, you know. Sure. Sure. Whoever would agree.
And in.
Keep them healthy.
It's year after year.
They're not healthy, they're not on the job.
Work, work, work. You know, and other options, I mean, in future years, and I know you had some changes to the healthcare plan last year and stuff like that. I mean, that's always on the table, on different options, different choices and stuff, but, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, no, I, I would also, I agree with you. Many women can swing too far to the other side because it's been way over here for a while. We're trying to find a balance, and I appreciate the board giving the opportunity to administer to have committees set up. Where employees are part of it. It's been a really good experience, I think, for the past couple of years. But also remember, Plan C is free as the employee.
Yeah.
There is no cost. It's the exact same plan that an A person gets, a C person gets. Everybody's getting that same plan. It's just that the deductible as a co-insurance is different for that employee. If I choose this plan, I have nothing on my paycheck. When I see.
Not, not until you have a health problem and you got.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's, it's still costs to use healthcare.
It's a prepaid enough problem. If you're taking it out of my check as a plan.
Yeah.
Money's gone.
Yeah.
I'm a private person, and I never go to the doctor. I never spend that money. So I think employees, you need to consider all three of those options as they move forward as well.
And I think this year too, what we're going to do is we're going to do a little more of a, more education. Show that if you're in an A plan now to save money, if you go to a B plan, but utilize the, the flex. Spending that you can take out pre-tax and kind of show some specific numbers, how the B plan is actually very. Beneficial, and you save money on that by utilizing pre-tax money to pay some of your deductible. It's just something that we're going to be doing a lot more outreach with everybody, especially during the open enrollment period. So we can help.
Yeah.
Show them how to save money as much as they can.
I've, I've run those some soon, so past several years, I've run the B plan, because my wife and I just. Some old age scripts for us.
Me too, Steve.
You know. Got to take your step.
I would like to say, I mean, at the county, we've got amazing insurance. I've never heard any of my own personal employees complain about it. For me, I think it's top of the line when I use, I have six family members on it. For me, it only have an increase of nine hundred and sixty-two, and every time I get a bill, I get toss it in the trash because I know I don't have to pay those. We're very lucky at the county with this insurance. Let's not ask too much of them.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I think Jake, did you want to say something?
I can see only thing I, it's a curiosity question more than anything. I'm talking about plans A, Plan B, Plan C. I know it was a huge push to try and get people off of Plan A last year. Because it was going to save the county X amount of dollars, that one, that dollar figure is. So my question would be, is the assumption by raising some of these percentages. Trying to push that to Plan B again? Trying to push people to Plan B because it's going to be even more of a dollar savings. And in mind that it's going to be dollar savings into the future. Because if you get more people off of Plan A, then that percentage is going to hopefully will change from. Accur sure on what our fee increase is going to be here over here when it comes to the insurance.
There's no intent on trying to push people to one plan or another. We are just merely saying, if you want to go to B, here's your financial savings by utilizing the flex plan. If you want to do A or C, it's your will, because it's the same plan. You're paying for the HRA coverage anyway. So from the county's point of view. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. It's so minimal. And the reason, leaving that C as an option this year, if we were to do for every one percent, we're going to make, we're going to, you know, it's going to be. Twenty-five hundred dollars. So it was not worth it at this time for that small little money to take away a free option when there was. Very little cost savings to the county on that.
I don't know how you do it, it's worth it for the board here or not employees, but. I don't know if you can hear a couple of dollars that go through some of these changes.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Do this now or not, but.
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the beauties of the, the insurance committee is that. We have the core group that meets to kind of go over recommendations, but then we have also the other one where it's like open to everybody. So anybody can come in. Anybody can have questions, and there will be a lot more. I don't want to say aggressive, but a lot more opportunities where I know Finance Director Whitmer even volunteered to go. To the individual departments and kind of just say, hey, this is my analysis for my healthcare coverage, and put real numbers behind it all. And everything like that. So there's going to be a big push this year on education that's going into this. And I know Tim has been a big part of all this as well. He's prepared a lot of spreadsheets. And as well as the rest of the insurance committee. And I think it's, it was. I think it was set up a year or two ago, and I think it was a very wise choice to get this going and getting ahead of the ball. And thank you, Tim, for your work on that.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, questions on that item? If not, we will move that to next week's meeting. And item twelve, consider approving. The adoption of Bank Reconciliation Policy Number Four Eighteen to strengthen internal controls. Prove financial accountability and address repeated audit, audit recommendations.
Finance Director Whitmer had to leave just when it was her turn to. So I will, I will discuss these. These are two of the audit findings that came out from last year. And so we currently have an IT policy that just came out of legal, and that will be in your next round of approvals. This is just getting policies set in place. For, if we look at the first one, would be the Bank Reconciliation Policy Number Four Eighteen. And so there's no impact. It just will help prevent financial errors or fraud. Prove audit outcomes and reduce audit time and associated costs over time. So this is. A recommendation that was made, and so we are just checking out the boxes on what the auditors find that. Where we needed to strengthen our internal controls.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think we had the conversation that we wanted to bring these action items, items and have a checklist.
Yes.
So that when the audit came through, that we would be marking these off.
And so what I.
Over at. What we have, yeah.
When we go into the regular meeting next week, Finance Director Whitmer will be here for that. And so. We will let you know the status, because there's other things that have already been done administratively, which we've done already to take. Take care of some of the audit findings that we just did internally, but this is a policy that requires board approval.
Does the treasurer have? Input on this?
Yes, oh, yes. And it went through legal as well.
Okay.
Questions? Comments? All right, we will move that to next week's meeting. And item thirteen, consider approving the adoption of vendor approval policy. Number Four Nineteen to address recurring audit comments and enhance consistency, transparency, and internal controls. In the procurement and vendor management process.
This was another audit finding, and I think this one right here, not that the bank reconciliation was not important. But I think when we are adding vendors to this, I think it's very important that we have. Set policy on how it's added, who's added, and just having some secondary set of eyes on this. And so going through it, I'm not going to get into it, but you have the definitions. You have the policies, and then we have specifically additions of new vendors. What's required? When a department needs a new vendor put in, what we're requiring to get from them. So we're not having to. Audit time, and we're trying to track everything down. But it also takes. Puts in a process where we don't have vendors that should not be in the system for various reasons.
Okay, yes, sir.
I looked at this and it kind of, I didn't find this. What is a vendor?
It might be anybody that provides services to the county. So if Jake is dealing with somebody as a new, provides a new product or new stuff. He would then, before the purchase is made, would have to provide all the information to, for accounts payable. So that we can get them in the vendor list. So then when the bill comes through, we just pull up the vendor name, drop down. We already have all the information, all the boxes are checked, and then we're not having to go back through and. Have Jake get with them and find all the information that we need.
So would a vendor also include an individual providing services to Commission on Aging? The Clerk's Office, to any of the other parks of recreation? Under a contractual arrangement?
If that is, yes, if it's a, if it's a ten ninety-nine issue, yes, I believe that. But I will clarify. I wish Chris was here to answer that. I want to say yes, but I, I will find, I will get a definite answer.
If it does, I'm thinking we need to put in, maybe at the very top, a definition for vendors.
Okay, I will, I will make a note of it, and then we'll share what we have to the board. As far as what we find, it's about a definition of vendor.
And then where I'm going with this is. I think we have contractors right now being paid under contractual wages. That potentially should probably be paid as an employee when you use the means test set out by state and federal. Ways and over agencies.
We are currently in the process, I'm waiting for a final review, which will be shared from the board on that exact item. Fifteen, twenty years of audits, they go through this whole thing. They have not noted anything wrong with our process.
I'd like to supply something to you. We need to meet.
Well, we'll, when we get this reviewed on, it'll be shared with the board.
Kind of the role of vacation service.
We should write it.
Yeah, I like this streamlining of the process.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, then we will keep moving right along in public comments. You want for general public comment?
It'll be online.
Okay, so you know, for general public comment announcements. Yes, sir.
Well, I just want to say that I, through ACAP, I went to a conference. It was a statewide conference of community action programs. Guess who was it? Amy Self, the person that did our waste. She's very nice. She was giving out yorios, because she's with Yoyo. I got four. My grandpa's.
Yes, sir. This weekend, Hill City. Still got, still got things there, so live band, a lot of history.
Okay, there is nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So who, Del is it?
The fourth, Marino.
We are adjourned.